To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Graham Cassoon, Tobin.
Here.
Kleiner.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Jean-François Zapson. Burr.
Yep.
Green.
Here.
Massey.
Here.
President Rodriguez.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Approval of minutes?
Tonight we have the minutes from common council meeting July 20, 2021.
So moved. Motion by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Johnson, all in favor.
Aye.
Correspondents?
Nothing this evening.
For the good of the city, Mayor would like to come up.
All right, good evening. A little bit out of order tonight. Tonight we have the honor of swearing in two of our new professional firefighters from the IAAF 1027, Trevor Barber and John Jonas. They've not only completed their academy, but they've completed their training here in the city, and they're ready to be officially sworn in. So I would ask both to come up, along with the chief and their families if they'd like, and onto the inside, and we'll swear them officially. Aye. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
No, faithfully discharge the duties.
City Mel Town three firemen.
City Mel Town three firemen.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Not a part of the family as a professional firefighter. It's horrible.
Do you want to address the report now?
No. Well, I'm going to do for good for the city first. So for the good of the city, anyone who would like to address the council, please step forward. Eileen, do we have anybody online?
We do not.
Okay, remarks of Mayor.
Well, good evening, and welcome once again, and congratulations to both firefighters, Jonas and Barber, and their families. We wish them a long career here in the city of Middletown. Also, nice to see President Demcek and members of the IAAF tonight, and we look forward to working with them very closely on some issues that are pending in front of all of our city workers. So, going right into the COVID issue. COVID is not over, folks, and as we all know, it's actually coming back. The Orange County positivity rate is up. The Middletown numbers, we're 169 per thousand people here in the city are affected by COVID. We have 97 active cases within the city. Countywide, we have 873 deaths, and there's over 50,000 positive cases here in Orange County. So we are once again looking at some mandates coming down from Albany with certain private, not only the private sector, say nursing and healthcare workers, but we're also looking at possibly other mandates coming down from Albany to address the spread, and we will react accordingly to those guidances. Thank you. Having a little trouble understanding me? We'll have a little, having, we'll react accordingly when the time comes for, to address whatever mandates may come. As you know, there's, we're going through a change in Albany, a change of leadership. Incoming Governor Hokel has expressed her position on mask mandate at schools. I agree with it. I know we get calls from people both ways, asking for us, to asking for me, to either, some people don't understand the school district is separate from the city, but I will throw my position out publicly that I do support a mask mandate for schools, and I go a little bit further as times, as things move forward. I'm taking more of a, quote, radical position regarding safety within public buildings also, so we'll see how that develops. So, the COVID is here. There are many friends that I have, I know are not only positive, some are in the hospitals. So folks, it is real. If you don't know it's real by now, just look around to some of your friends and family, and I'm sure you'll see it once again, that it's reared its ugly head, and to please go out and get a vaccine. They're available for free. Almost, you can walk into almost any drugstore and get one, but we really need you to be tested. Some of you did call about people going door-to-door in the city, encouraging vaccines, and they're going door-to-door in Middletown and other parts of the county because we have a lower vaccination rate than other parts of the county. And that's too bad, because we also have more exposure than other people in the county because of our, we're more of a, less a middle-class, blue-collar community. We work in hospitals, we work in healthcare, we work in supermarkets, warehouses, we work amongst people, most of our residents, so there's no reason not to have a vaccination. So, we're going to push it, we're going to keep pushing it, and we'll do whatever we can legally within the laws that are sent down from Albany to assist people in making those decisions, and hopefully to be the right decision. On the, on another front, the warming center, we're happy to announce that the move has been made from the temple to the Mulberry House on Mulberry Street. I want to thank the volunteers and City Hall DPW staff under Mr. Twill, Mr. Pengel, who assisted in the matter. The, they are fully in, they will be operating here on Mulberry Street come this November. So, we also had some inquiries about, there was a rumor floating out there that it wasn't happening, but we know how the rumors are, but, and where they come from, but it did happen. The place is complete on the inside. There's a couple kitchen things that had to be put together, but nothing major inside. We put out the bid, the exterior work, which is not mandatory, but it's more, not only cosmetic, it's to make the place look nicer, but also be safer with replacing the landscaping of the wall, and the sidewalk, and maybe some parking lot improvements. So, it is open city public parking there, so we're going to do our best to do the, to make the repairs there also. But they'll all be done before the warming center opens. On a real positive front, we, I'm sure many noticed that we did an extensive job at paving this year under Commissioner Twill. We did over $3 million in paving in the city. A good portion of the city, you know, we have 70-plus miles of lane roads in the city, and paving is not cheap, but we did do probably two and a half to three times as much as we usually do. And we used some of our federal ARPA funding and CHIPS funding over the last two years. So we did a great job. The crews were out there during the 95-degree days, paving, and it really was a tough road for them, but they made it work. And I know they're going around now, patching, doing anyone who has a complaint about the bottom of their driveway. We're trying to make all those little minor repairs, but for the most part, the jobs came out very nice, and I want to thank DPW for a job well done. In regards to the census, good news. The good news is that we did task the Economic Development Department with, working with the Census Bureau on getting people here in the city counted. As you know, and we, at every meeting, we ended with a slide saying, be counted, Census 2021. It's important you count, we get you counted because it's important for our revenue here in the city. And our number two source of revenue behind property taxes is sales tax. And just based on the numbers that have been reported, and Caitlin was able to pull off of our website, and by the way, Caitlin was given that task by Maria Bruni, so Caitlin and Maria worked on the census outreach and did a fantastic job. The new numbers are pretty, pretty significant for us, and I was stupid enough not to bring the numbers up, but I can tell you that the article here in the Patch, which is a paper from Westchester County, it's called the Pekskin-Cortland New York area, they identified the 10 fastest-growing cities in New York State. As you know, there are 62 New York cities. Many of them had a decline in population. Well, number four in percentage in growing population in New York State is the city of Middletown. And that's due to the hard work of Caitlin, Maria, and others, and some of the volunteers and the Census Bureau, who were out going door-to-door trying to get people to sign up and be counted. So we are now over 30,000 people, and Newburgh either stayed about the same, Port Jervis stayed about the same, but we are now about 44.6% of the population in Orange County of the three cities. In past sense, in a past sales tax apportionment, we are around 40, 44%. So we'll be going up 2% in the apportionment numbers, and Newburgh and Port Jervis will be dropping slightly. So, we, well, actually, in the sales tax apportionment that will be coming forth in the next year or so, we will pick up significant amounts of money for that, in that apportionment number. So, good job to them, and it was a lot of work, but they made it work. And I think that's all I have, other than Jerry's going to ask about the Heritage Trail, and the meetings are continually canceled. Jacob is in contact with Allen Sorensen. I think they're just waiting for the approval on the correct way to cross East Main Street. That's the last input that I had. The best way to cross East Main Street, not the shortest route. There are some people who want to go straight across, and others want to go up to the corner and through the parking lot. So we're waiting for them to make that determination. We are still hopeful that that portion of the project will be bid out sometime this year for a spring construction. And that's all I have. Any questions?
Any question for the mayor? Alderman Johnson.
I'm glad to know that you can predict the future, Mayor. That's really reassuring with Alderman Kleiner. You know, Alderman-
I've been down that road before, I think.
You still predicted the future. Alderman Ram Cassoon and I did do a survey of our ward, and we wanted to thank you that most, if not all, of our targeted streets were paved, and the third ward appreciates that. A quick question on the warming center. Will the capacity still be maximum at 30?
Yes.
Thank you.
It's in by contract. Okay, one other thing before I go to another question, is on, Maria's going to address the run for downtown on Saturday, but there's also another event taking place in Davich Park after the run for downtown. It's from 1:00 to 5:00 p.m. It's from the group It Takes a Village. It's cosponsored by the city, City Mel Town Police Department, the Sheriff's Department, and it's a community event at Davich. Third, have a softball game, Spades, Domino's, Zumba, some food, face painting, bounce houses, flag football drills, sidewalk math, school supply giveaway, and more. It's organized by the same committee that organized Juneteenth, and it's under this umbrella of It Takes a Village. So you're welcome, all are welcome to attend. The rain date is August 28, but hopefully they'll be able to pull it off this Saturday. So, it'll be at Davich. They will, they will be doing COVID, practicing the CDC COVID protections that are recommended, and anyone who would like to attend, it's free of charge.
Alderman Kleiner.
Thank you. From our constituents' meeting, I would have asked Jacob this question, except Jacob's not here, so just, somebody asked how the new garbage trucks were doing.
Garbage trucks doing well. The staff is getting accustomed to them. They'll get quicker and quicker as they move along. There is, you know, one problem we're having is people who have multiple cans, or more than one can, obviously, most people are just two if they have, if they do have multiple cans. They're putting them side by side, so it's hard for the grabber to get in, or they're putting them too close to the mailbox, but all those things will be worked out. And, you know, obviously, the tighter streets are the ones that are going to create a bigger problem, so it's not only getting the public used to them, but it's also getting the drivers accustomed to doing it. So, it's, the program's going well, it's positive feedback from the DPW crews. They don't have to get out and break their back lifting those large cans, and, but we notice the streets where there's full compliance are much cleaner. People get many compliments on how it even looks the next morning. Not garbage cans thrown all over the place, garbage can placed nicely onto the lawn area or on the sidewalk area. But we do still ask people to comply with the guidelines. We have brochures available at City Hall. We will be mailing out in our water bills those brochures, but anyone who wants a copy, we can email it to you, we can get it online, and it has the instructions as it relates to, relates to the pickup. So, the, overall, it's going to be an excellent program for us.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Okay, reports of the department heads, Economic Development.
Tonight, I just want to report on the run for downtown is this weekend. It's a little bit modified, but it's happening. We're starting Thursday night with some music in the Run for Downtown park. The group is side by side, and then Friday night, they're going to have in-person registration at the park, and then also, we have our music in Festival Square, featuring the gentlemen of soul, R&B and soul music. And then the Run for Downtown, Saturday morning, everything starts at 8:00 a.m. And I, you know, like to thank Marshall and Sterling Insurance. They came on board again this year, as they have been, I think, for the past four years, as the presenting sponsor for $5,000. And of course, the city and the Business Improvement District is the host of this event. And that's about it. If anybody has any questions.
Any questions for Maria? Thank you, Maria.
Thank you.
Fire chief.
Good evening, everyone. To date, we're at 521 runs in the city. We are also participating in the Run for Downtown. We actually, firemen came up with a little group that's going to be probably walking it, but we're going to make it. We still have, we're still scheduled for our parade on October 2. Everybody should have gotten an invite through your email. Lineup's at 2, step all set 3. And after the parade, we'll have our festivities up at Davich Park, trophies, and everything else. So, that's all I have. Any other questions? Oh, I'm sorry. This Saturday, we also have our Tri-Department Wet Down, which will be held at American Legion on Webb Road.
Now, what companies?
That would be the Eagles, Mahagans, and McCoys. Come right out, grab a bite to eat, get sprayed, have some fun.
Any question for the fire chief? Thank you, chief. City treasurer.
I just wanted to let everybody know Lenora Liz is the new deputy treasurer, and she is starting on Monday. So if anyone's around next week and wants to pop in and say hello to her, she will be brand new and probably want to see some new faces. And there's a resolution tonight for the mayor to sign the Capital Market Advisors renewal agreement, and Don just wanted me to say that he really has worked with them for years, and they've done a lot of good things for us, and that he would recommend that.
Okay. Any questions? Thank you. Police chief.
Good evening. I have nothing this evening, unless you have any questions for me.
Any question for the chief? Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
City clerk.
I have nothing this evening.
Any question for John? All right. Remarks of Alderman, Alderman Massey.
Yeah, good evening. I want to congratulate the two new firefighters and their families. Hope you have a nice, long career, and thank you for choosing Middletown. And the second group of thanks I'd like to send out to Caitlin McNamara and Maria Bruni for the work that you did on the census. That really helps us here in Middletown, so thank you very much. That's it.
Alderman Tobin?
Yeah, same thing. I'd like to congratulate the firefighters, Jonas and Barber, and great job on the census.
Alderman Green.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I'll echo the same sentiments. Congratulations to John and Trevor, and also to Maria and Caitlin, your team. That was a phenomenal job. We all know how tough the census can be to get done, and I just hope everyone enjoys the Saturday that we have in the city that's packed with three big events. So that's an exciting thing. Things are, you know, slowly but surely getting around, as long as we all get to, get to the right place and get vaccinated, and, you know, mask up when needed, and all that we've looked for, for the past year, you know, we'll just do it and get to the right spot with that. I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Alderman Johnson.
I agree with my colleagues. I have nothing else this evening. Thank you.
Alderman Ratson.
I would just like to welcome our new firefighters. Awesome work on the census. I just want to remind everyone in the third ward that we do have award meeting next Tuesday. It will be in Maple Hill Park. We always have treats. It's at 6:30, weather permitting, which has been good to us so far, so hopefully that stays that way. Have a good night.
Alderman Kleiner.
Thank you. Speaking of ward meetings, we had our second ward meeting yesterday. We'll try and get questions answered going forward. I thank the people who turned out, and especially, thank Chief Awansu, who came to our meeting, and we had very interesting discussions. I also want to thank the mayor, who has kindly agreed to come to our next second ward meeting. That'll be at the regular time, September 13. It'll be the second Monday. So, we hope people will turn out for that, and, other than that, I'll see people at the concerts or the Run for Downtown. Thank you.
Alderman Burr.
I also agree with my colleagues on the census and the fire, new firefighters. Plus, when you're talking 2% on the census of our second biggest revenue in the city is sales tax, 2% is big money. Thank you.
That's it. New business.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr to accept $1,100 donation for park improvements.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr, seconded by Alderman Ratson. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassoon.
Aye.
Tobin.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr to submit an application to the County of Orange for safe summer youth engagement funding.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr, seconded by Alderman Massey. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassoon.
Aye.
Tobin.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green to authorize the treasurer to transfer $20,000 within the 2021 operating budget of the Middletown Recreation and Parks Department due to continued improvements and repairs to the recreation campus.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Kleiner. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassoon.
Aye.
Tobin.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green to authorize the mayor to sign a proposal from CPL for engineering services for a structural assessment of the Paramount Theater.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green, seconded by Alderman Massey. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassoon.
Aye.
Tobin.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson to authorize the mayor to sign a contract to accept an award in the amount of $14,476 given to the city by the New York State Governor's Traffic Safety Committee.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Burr. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassoon.
Aye.
Tobin.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Graham Cassoon to authorize the mayor to sign a renewal agreement of the financial advisory services with Capital Markets Advisors LLC.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Cassoon, seconded by Alderman Tobin. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassoon.
Aye.
Tobin.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin to amend the city code, Chapter 460, Vehicles and Traffic, Section 460-11, to add Beth Place will be a stop street at Houston, Houston Avenue Extension.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin, seconded by Alderman Green. Any discussion? Alderman Kleiner. I can't hear you.
I trust the judgment of our fourth ward alderman on this.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Roll.
Graham Cassoon.
Aye.
Tobin.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner to authorize the mayor to sign a contract of sale of 2.5 acres of vacant land from the Missionary Society of Our Lady of Mark Carmel for the purpose of erecting a water tank.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, seconded by Alderman Green. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassoon.
Aye.
Tobin.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson to approve the closing of Wilcox Avenue at West Main Street and Hanford Street for a neighborhood block party on Saturday, August 21, 2021, from 2:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Cassoon. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassoon.
Aye.
Tobin.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson to approve the closing of Wilcox Avenue at West Main Street and Hanford Street for a neighborhood block party on Saturday, August 21, 2021, from 2:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Cassoon. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassoon.
Aye.
Tobin.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey to close streets for the firemen's parade on Saturday, October 2, 2021.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Tobin. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassoon.
Aye.
Tobin.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Graham Cassoon to approve the purchase of property in Mount Hope on Kohler Road, and authorize the mayor to sign all documents related to the acquisition of the property.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Graham Cassoon, seconded by Alderman Green. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassoon.
Aye.
Tobin.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green to authorize the treasurer to transfer $234,000 within the police department's 2021 budget to cover the costs of overtime incurred by staffing the vaccination clinic.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green, seconded by Alderman Johnson. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassoon.
Aye.
Tobin.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner to authorize the extension of the closing of Union Street for the farmer's market every Saturday from 7:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., from August 14, 2021, to October 23, 2021.
Motion by Alderman Kleiner, seconded by Alderman Burr. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassoon.
Aye.
Tobin.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes. That is all for new business.
Audit.
Mr. President, I move the accounts be audited, the claims be adjusted, and the city treasurer be authorized to issue warrants for their payment.
Resolution by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Johnson. Roll.
Graham Cassoon.
Aye.
Tobin.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes.
Move for adjournment?